The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by De Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
Okay, it's 6:05. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you prepared for the public safety hearing?
Yep. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing before the Public Safety and Traffic Committee. My name is Susan Shalfo Zephyr. I'm the chairperson along with Counselor Noseworthy from Ward 5, the other Jesus de Clerk, and Counselor-at-Large Claire Frida is the third member. This evening we're having a public hearing on Petition 6-26. David R. Cormier, Ward 3 Counselor, requests to place a street light on the telephone pole located in front of 699 Willard Street. So this was on our agenda last meeting and we continued it, well, we continued the public hearing to this evening. I see, are you ready to weigh in on this or is that?
On the streetlight.
On the streetlight. Okay. We haven't had, we did refer to the DPW and the Lemonster Police Department Traffic Division. I haven't seen anything specifically from the Traffic Division. Okay, or the DPW, right? Okay. I don't know why that is. Captain Frayer, would you like to come up, please?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I did not see the request come through.
Okay.
But I can tell you right now that visibility, lighting, we're always in favor of that.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We may ask, is Second Robishod, is he still doing the written referrals back to the council for traffic?
So Sergeant Robishod is the sergeant in charge of traffic. I oversee him. I usually get copied on all of them. But he has had a lot lately. Yeah.
Okay. There's so much work downtown. I mean, it's being done. I mean, it looks like it's been traffic.
Well, it's not just that. It's, I gotta tell you, AI has really had an impact on the traffic unit.
How so?
Because all of these GPS services, Waze, you know, Google Maps, all these things that people use are now figuring out where each other are and they're sending people down streets that they never have before. So right now in town, we have, we have traffic complaints and issues on streets that we have never had in the past. And we have backroads that are now becoming traveled just as much, if not more than some traditional semi-mains. And it's, it's a lot to keep up with.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Is there anybody on the council who has any questions about this petition for streetlight on Willard Street? With the petitioner, Counselor Cormier, would you just want to explain a little bit like where this is located?
Sure.
And what it's addressing, the problem that it's solving.
Yeah, if you go up Willard Street, you're heading toward Sterling. It's just past Crabtree up there, you know, a curve, a couple of new homes there. So one of the homeowners reached out to me and, you know, say it's quite dark up there at night. And I had asked the mayor's office if they could, you know, just give Joe Pori an order to go up there and put a light. And, you know, after some going back and forth with his office, they want a petition from the city council, an official, a formal vote. I don't think it's, I don't think our vote is binding. It's, at the end of the day, up to the mayor. But if he chooses to move forward, National Grid likes to see some kind of, you know, certification, I'm sure from the city clerk, that we took a vote and said it's okay to put that on the poll.
Okay. All righty. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions or? Okay, good. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for or against Petition 6-26? For a second time, is there anybody who'd like to weigh in on Petition 6-26? And for a third and final time, does anybody who'd like to speak on 6-26? Now is the time. Seeing none, my recommendation would be, I'd like to wait for a DPW, just to get the DPW referral in writing. But we can probably, we can close the public hearing. Is that right?
I would think so. I mean, all right.
So my recommendation would be to close the public hearing. And, you know, I'd like to wait for a written referral from the DPW.
So you're gonna recommend for the time?
I would recommend for the time, yes. I think. Yeah.
All right.
And would you check with, no, we'll do that.
We'll do that during this. That's all right. And timing's perfect because it's now 6:10 and we can go right into 5:26.
So this is a public hearing on Petition 5-26 before the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Susan Shalfo Zephyr. I'm the chairperson of Legal Affairs along with Counselor Pauline Cormier, who's the second member present tonight. 5-26, Joe Pandolfo, on behalf of Golden Nozzle Car Wash and Noria Energy, 468 Main Street, Lemonster, Mass., requests a petition to obtain an underground fuel storage license for a total of three 1,000-gallon underground storage tanks for heating at the Golden Nozzle Car Wash located at 468 Main Street. We were unable to obtain a natural gas service from National Grid due to the street opening moratorium placed on Main Street by the state of Massachusetts. The state will not allow us to excavate or disturb the existing asphalt paving on Main Street. Therefore, we were forced to switch our fuel supports to propane. Eastern propane has been contracted to supply the underground storage tanks. The City of Lemonster Fire Department and Deputy Chief Ryan Young have granted a 2,000-gallon permit for underground storage. The Fire Department has also allowed Eastern propane to set an additional underground 1,000-gallon tank on the site on the condition that we obtain the 3,000-gallon underground propane storage permit. We've attached a copy of the agreement from the Fire Department along with a plan showing the location of the three tanks. So this is continued, it's a continued public hearing from our last meeting. And Mr. Pandolfo, would you like to come up, sir? Madam Clerk, did you, we reach, did you reach out to the Fire Department to have Deputy Young here?
Yes, I did.
Deputy Chief Young, he's not here at the moment, but, okay, would you like, welcome.
Hi.
Hi. Would you just like to tell us in general about this? And I know that some folks have questions, but you can just give us a summary, please.
Yeah, it's pretty much what you read. We weren't able to get natural gas, so we have to go with propane due to the moratorium. And the 3,000 gallons is needed based on the usage for the facility. And that's basically it.
Okay. Do you know when the, what's the, what's the status of the moratorium? Do you know when it ends?
It was a five, it was a five-year moratorium. I think it's four years left. Is that accurate?
I don't know. I'm asking. Okay.
It's multiple years. That's what I'm doing.
Okay, multiple years. All right. I am going to go to the council.
Is that microphone on?
Yes. Yes. Out.
Oh, no. Sounds like it. Let's hear you again. Sorry.
Well, out is on, right? That's it. Is that better?
Yeah, I think you just need to pull it closer.
Yeah, you need to pull it closer. Thank you, Karen. Yeah. All right. So I'm gonna go to the committee. Counselor Pauline Cormier, do you have any questions?
Mr. Pandolfo, so you're functioning right now with the two 1,000-gallon tanks?
Well, presently, due to the weather, there, there's no need.
Okay.
So we're not operating with fuel.
Okay.
They're not, they're not full. The Chief Young wouldn't allow us to fill anything yet.
Okay.
So it depends on what, where we end up with this meeting.
All right. So you, but you said, you just said that the, based on usage, you would need the 3,000 gallons.
Yes. The propane is for heating only. So the car wash doesn't operate in summer months or non-winter months. It has no need for propane.
Okay. But this is based on, not this location, other similar locations, you're expecting the same?
So basically, you, in the design of the building, you submit a load calculation to the, whether it's natural gas or propane, and they give you the size of what's required for tanks.
Okay.
So.
And you expect that the 3,000 gallons is gonna be necessary to get you through the winter months during the use?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That'll be an adequate source. I mean, obviously, it doesn't get you through a whole winter, but it, based on their, like, how often they fill it, it'll be fine for what they need at that location.
Okay. How's business over there so far?
It's actually very good.
Okay. I know when I go out and by, it's always pretty busy.
Yeah, no, it's just done well. They're happy.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the city's happy as well. I know that site was vacant for quite a while.
It was. It was an ugly sand pit for a long time. So, all right. I have no other questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor David Cormier.
No, I just, I just want to thank you very much, you know, for coming this evening. And one of the things that I'm happy to see is that the tanks are underground. You know, that is, takes away a lot of concern. And nobody can hit them or a vehicle fire, you know, can't happen close to them and have problems. So I'm happy that they're underground and, and I'm sure that, you know, they're gonna be brand-new tanks up to today's standards.
Yes, correct.
So, you know, I'm sure they're gonna meet all those requirements anyway. So I'm certainly comfortable with it and I'm happy. Like I said, I can't trust enough, I'm happy that they're underground. So that, and plus, it looks better, too, you know.
Yes.
Aesthetically, so, yeah.
Absolutely. Counselor Roberts, are you done?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pandolfo, I just wanted to say thank you for coming down as well tonight. One of the reasons that it got continued was I had that similar question around the length of the moratorium and how much time was left. So I appreciate you taking the time to come and answer questions. And I'm also very glad to hear business is doing well.
Thank you.
As the Ward 2 Counselor said, every time I've driven by, it's packed. So very happy to be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Just a quick question, Mr. Pandolfo. Again, thanks for coming down, taking the time to speak to us tonight. But when was this site first purchased and decided to put this, put car wash there?
It was contingent on a multiple things, but it was probably about three years ago. It took a while to get all the approvals and state approvals and city approvals. But I think roughly about three years ago.
So could you have gotten your gas line in before they paved that section of the street?
Well, we wouldn't have been able to get permitting for the city to, until you have a project approved. You wouldn't have been able to do anything.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah.
But thank you very much.
Thanks.
One of the other, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. One of the other questions I have, you know, and I was thinking of this , too, and thank you, Counselor Ardinger, for reminding me. I'm surprised when they did the street that they didn't leave, like, a stub. Don't they usually leave, like?
That's, that's more water, sewer.
I think they do that with a lot of water. Maybe they don't do it with gas.
No, not with gas.
Yeah. I'm sure you checked.
I don't know if there's liability with that, but that's not a common practice.
Yeah, yeah. And I was, I was thinking of that, why they didn't do that. Because then you wouldn't have this issue, right?
Yeah, it would be nice, actually.
Yeah, I know.
But I think, yeah, I'm not sure why they don't.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't know if they had told you, if you had asked that question or not.
No, we didn't know until after the project was approved. We went to file with the National Grid and then we found out both the moratorium. We had no idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Frida.
Thank you. I have an allergy that have my ears blocked. So if you said it before, I apologize to repeat it. Who is gonna do the maintenance? Eastern Propane? Do they own the tank or do you own the tanks?
They own the tanks.
They own the tanks. So they're gonna be responsible for all the maintenance of those tanks?
Well, there's no maintenance, but filling and.
Well, there's regular testing.
Yeah.
Don't they have to test it once a year or?
Yeah, yearly inspection.
At what point did you realize that you couldn't dig up the streets? I mean, the...
It was after, so we were permitted, I think, last, it was, it was about six months after construction, roughly, that we knew, after permit, excuse me, that we found out. We required all the permits from the city and the state. Because there's an intersect, there's a light there coming off the highway. So we required a lot of special state permits as well as permits from the city to get that project approved. So then after we did that, we, there's a process where you apply for water, sewer, electric, gas, internet or data. And then that was one of the steps we found out that you can't go into the street, per the state. That's not a Lemonster guideline. That's the state moratorium, because it's a state road. So.
So when the, the moratorium is over, which is generally five years, so do you have an intention to hook up to the gas at that point?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be.
If you're gonna stay with propane?
Correct. Yes. It would, the, all the HVAC units are already propane now. It wouldn't be cost-effective. Maybe someday down the road, possibly, but not, not in the near future, no.
And that other tank is already in, the third tank's already in the ground?
It's in the ground. Nothing is hooked up. Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Noseworthy.
Thank you. No questions. I just wanted to, again, like everyone else that already said, thank you for coming down and congratulate you on the business. And I'm glad to hear that it's going well and wishing you luck.
Thank you.
Okay. If the council hasn't, doesn't have any more questions, I'll go to the public. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on Petition 5-26, either in support or in opposition? For a second time, is there anybody who would like to speak on Petition 5-26? For a third and final time, is there anybody who'd like to speak on 5-26? Okay. Seeing that there's nobody wanting to speak from the public, my recommendation would be to close the public hearing.
Very well.
And I ask you to, no, no, that's during the phone. I'm sorry.
Yep. No worries. Thank you, Counselor. And I think we're at 6:15. Yes. So we can go right into 10-26.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Pleasure.
10-26. Okay. 10-26, David R. Cormier, Ward 3 Counselor, requests to amend Chapter 13 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 13-25, 75, pardon, entitled Speed Limits Specific Streets and Add the Following: Old Mill Road from Willard Street to Jungle Road at 25 Miles an Hour. So this, I don't know that we've gotten anything back from traffic or the DPW.
Police chief.
Oh, the police chief has no objection. That's right.
Right.
Okay. So we have heard from the police. Nothing from DPW. Does anybody on the council have any questions about this? I mean, straightforward, fairly routine. No? No questions on that? Any questions? Okay. All right. So then I'll go to, does the petitioner want to add anything about this? Straightforward, right?
Just that I got a request from a constituent. And I actually got another call from another constituent who saw the ad in the newspaper about this public hearing and actually said she was halfway through the bridge just the other day and another vehicle came from the other way pretty fast and just drove right up on her. And, you know, so she also agrees that she'd like people to slow down.
Okay, good. So Counselor Ardinger.
When, thank you, when Counselor Cormier talked about the underpass, I don't think it's possible, but could there be a lower speed limit posted right before that underpass? Because it is dangerous going through there. And very dangerous. I don't know, but if it could be, that would be nice.
That's probably, you know, a good idea that Counselor Cormier could explore. That would have to be a separate petition.
Right.
But this is what we have before us. But that's a good idea.
Like a 10 mile or 15 mile an hour zone, 100 feet before on each side or something.
Each side.
Because it narrows.
And that bridge is kind of turned.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the council have any questions or comments? No? Okay, we'll go to the public. Does anybody have any comments on Petition 10-26? For a second time, does anybody have any comments or questions about 10-26? For a third and final time, does anyone want to weigh in on Petition 10-26? Seeing that there's no, no one in the public that would like to weigh in, my recommendation would be to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. And we are at, past 6:17, so we can start 12-26.
All right. 12-26, John Frayer, Captain, 116 Central Street, Lemonster Police Department, requests to amend Section 13-88.3, right turn restriction by adding the following. No driver or vehicle traveling northbound on Central Street at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Park Street shall make a right-hand turn onto Monument Square. Captain Frayer?
Yes.
Why don't you come up and give us a little context for this?
Sure. So we all know about the upcoming, is this working?
I think so.
Okay. I project anyway. But we all know about the upcoming project downtown and going through and just reviewing current ordinances versus what is actually there. There has been a no right-hand turn sign there for as long as I can remember, and there is no ordinance. But it seems to work pretty well. So we wanted to solidify it through ordinance to make sure that it stays there.
Okay. So it's housekeeping, kind of, right?
It is. Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's great. Thank you so much for that explanation.
No problem.
Does anybody on the council have any questions for the captain before he jumps up and leaves?
I never know if he's supposed to say.
You can stay. You're on the hot seat next to me.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Captain Frayer?
Not uncommon that this happens. We've seen it before.
Oh, absolutely.
It's good to clean it up.
Right. No, I think that's, that's a good idea. Okay, I'll go to the public. Is there anybody who'd like to weigh in on Petition 12-26? For a second time, is there anybody who would like to comment on Petition 12-26? For a third and final time, would anybody like to weigh in on Petition 12-26? Okay. So seeing that there is no further public comment, my recommendation would be to close the public hearing.
Okay. And we can go right into 13-26.
13-26, John Frayer, Captain, 116 Central Street, Lemonster Police Department, requests to amend Section 13, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. 13-26, John Frayer, Captain, 116 Central Street, Lemonster Police Department, requests to amend Section 13-88.2, right lane must turn right by adding the following: Monument Square northbound onto Mechanic Street. Captain Frayer, would you like to put this one in context, too?
Sure. It's the same thing. It's the way that the signs and the markings have been for a long time. It's a tough intersection. Everybody tries to merge on the Main Street there. And we just want to solidify, solidify it by city ordinance, all those signs. We've been down there trying to do a little more enforcement lately. It's tough. There's no real place to sit because of all the parking and things like that. But we've been doing some education on it and we'd like to solidify the ordinance. So we can actually start enforcing it after we've done some more education.
Good. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll go to the council. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Nope. Okay, seeing none from the council, does anybody in the public want to weigh in on 13-26? For a second time, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on 13-26? And for a third and final time, would anybody like to weigh in on 13-26? All right. Seeing no further comment by the public, my recommendation would be to close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. We have four minutes or approximately four minutes for our next hearing on 3-26. So we'll get a little dead time. twenty-six, so we get a little dead time. Okay, it's six thirty.
No, this isn't working either. No.
I think it's David's fault.
We're bound to find out. Oh, let's blame him anyway.
Especially if the light's on. I went home in there, but the light's on.
I don't think anybody's.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. It's fine.
We're not lights on.
Yeah.
He said everything's on.
David in charge.
Maybe.
Switch it on, it's switching on and off.
Yeah. Oh, good.
On now. Okay, we're back.
I'm not going to turn it off. Okay, good, thank you. So, petition three dash twenty-six, this is a public hearing before the Legal Affairs Committee. Three dash twenty-six, Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, Monarch City Regional Planning Commission, requests to amend the zoning ordinance to replace Article fifteen, accessory apartments with a new Article fifteen that complies with recently passed state law and makes other changes to implement the ordinance. This is the continued public hearing, and for the record, would you please introduce yourself?
My name is Joseph Boyle, I am a...
I don't think that's working.
My name is Joseph Boyle.
No, it is.
Good evening, Counselors, my name is Joseph Boyle, I'm a principal planner at the Monarch City Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, so you submitted this, so why don't you just walk us through?
Okay.
For the public, you can explain.
In November twenty, in November twenty twenty-four, the state legislature passed legislation, housing legislation, which included, among other things, amending the State Zoning Act to make accessory dwelling units allowable by right in all single-family residential districts. This, the bill was written to go into effect as of February first, so as of February first, the existing accessory apartments language in the Leominster zoning ordinance became a dead letter. Since then, the Building Department has been issuing building permits based on state law and not Leominster's zoning ordinance. So knowing this was coming up, Leominster applied for and received from us a district-level technical assistance grant to work with people here at Leominster City Hall to develop a new ordinance, which is compliant with the new law, to re-regulate accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units, to the extent that the new, the new amendments to the State Zoning Act allow. And so, starting, I believe in January, I began working with a working group from City Hall. I have a couple of the members of that group here tonight from the Inspectional Services and Building Department, and we developed a legally compliant amendment, which will bring your accessory dwelling units back in, under City of Leominster's permitting.
Okay. Would you two like to join Mr. Boyle here to answer questions? I'm sure you might have questions. Mr. Isle, have you had a lot of building permits since the February law went into effect for local folks to build ADUs?
Two.
Two, okay. That's good, and they were pretty straightforward?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had a lot of other people come in requesting them, but they don't meet the setbacks or some other thing. So most of the people, it won't fit on their property.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so we've only, we've only issued two permits so far for ADUs.
Okay. So the, so they're allowed by right, but they still have to comply with existing regulations?
Zoning setbacks.
Zoning setbacks, yes, of course. And they have to, do they have to submit a site plan? I would imagine.
We only require a set plan if it's going to be a real tight squeeze.
Okay.
If they have plenty of room, we can see it right on the GIS maps if it'll fit in on.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then some of them, they're adding them, you can actually add it in your basement, in your attic, on your house, your garage, it's... But, like it says, most of the people, they haven't been able to do it because of, a couple people had wetland issues, so.
Okay. Mr. Boyle, do you want to walk through some of the changes? And I'm curious about, so, so most of the changes comply with the recently passed state law, and then they make other changes to implement the new ordinance, I'm curious about that.
Oh, okay. We read, we read, well, the other changes that are in here were changes to other sections of the zoning ordinance, which needed to be changed in order to be consistent with the new ADU section. So there might have been references to this or that, and we had to rewrite those. For example, a new definition of accessory apartment, to bring it into compliance. Okay, then there were a lot of little technical changes, like number two here. There were, I don't even recall exactly what this referred to, but it referred to two types of situations where it might apply. Now there's going to be a third, so the language has to change from either one or both to any. It mostly, the sections that aren't, that aren't creating the, that aren't the, the new ADU section are language fixes like that. The one substantive change here on number four, we're striking special permit. Formerly, your accessory apartment section was by special permit. The new state law requires that it be allowed by right, so we had to strike any language referring to, this was a special permit issued for an ADU, and now it's just referring to a permit issued for an ADU.
Right, but that's for the first or the protected ADU, right? Because some people, if they had a good-sized lot, might want to build more than one ADU, correct?
Yes, and this is written to, and this was a topic of discussion at the meetings. According to the new law, one ADU per lot needs to be allowed by right. Beyond that, you can have a special permit requirement, or you could even not allow them. And the decision made at the working group was to not allow second ADUs.
Is that right?
Yes.
Is, where is that in here?
It only, it isn't in here that bans a second, there's, isn't language that specifically states a second ADU isn't allowed, but there is, but the language that is in here only allows one. You may have an ADU.
And there's no, okay, so then, and then there's no opportunity to get a second one with a special permit?
That's right. That was, that's right, that is the way that was, that was written.
Okay, interesting. Okay, do you want to continue through the changes?
Yes, number five, accessory dwelling unit was a use listed on your table of uses. Typically, a table of uses in a zoning ordinance is a table of principal uses. And having a, an accessory use on the table of uses was an unusual thing to begin with. And in this case, where we wanted to distinguish between the first ADU's status as allowed and the second as not allowed, we needed to just take it out of the table, so that it would, it would have one symbol on the table, which was saying yes or special permit, and that wouldn't be accurate applying to all ADUs. So we just took it off the table, literally took it off the table, so your table is now a table of principal uses. Going through numbers six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, that is, that section twenty-two goes district by district, and lists, you know, special conditions in each of those, and so I'm just adding language which addresses each of the districts in which, in which single-family homes are allowed. I put this language in so that ADUs, so that there would be ADU language authorizing those in those districts. That is what the state requirement allows. It's an interesting detail here, the language in the law that was passed referred to single-family zoning districts. The interpretation of that the state is putting on that for the purpose of this law is not a zoning district in which only single-family homes are allowed. That's not their interpretation. Their interpretation is a zoning district, any zoning district, in which single-family homes are allowed. So your multifamily zoning districts, which allow twos and allow four families and stuff, for the purpose of this law, they count as single-family zoning districts, because they also allow single families. That's why we have number ten here. You had passed in recent years a zoning amendment stating that residential uses in the BB district, the Business B district, can be allowed by special permit. We're proposing to amend that to say residential uses other than detached single-family homes are allowed in the BB district. That takes the BB district out of the set of districts in which an ADU has to be allowed. It's no longer a single-family district, so ADUs wouldn't be allowed in the BB. I just, just note, the BB offers multiple pathways for permitting an additional apartment unit, if that's what somebody wants to do. So making that change isn't really a big loss.
Well, they're permitted with a special permit from the planning board.
They are currently permitted with a special permit from the planning board, and because they were permitted by, uh, single-family homes, and because they are permitted by a special permit from the planning board, that makes the BB district a single-family district, according to the state's regulations on these. We didn't want the BB district to be a place where there were accessory apartments by right, and so we're removing the BB district, you may now, uh, single-family homes from that special permit. You may now permit any residential use in the BB district except for a detached single-family home. Frankly, your BB districts, they're relatively small neighborhood centers, intended to be walkable, walkable centers for, commercial centers for residential around it. Having detached, single-family homes sitting on a lot would kind of go in the wrong direction for the city's vision for its, its commercial neighborhood centers.
You loosened it to allow them on the first level about a year or two years ago. So, like, as you said, there's a lot of ways to build residential...
Yes.
...uses on, in the BB district that there weren't before.
Correct. Correct. Okay, continuing on this, uh... Number twelve here. Twelve and, hmm, I'm sorry, I have these numbered incorrectly. Yes, going through twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Twenty-two dash thirty-seven is about setbacks, okay? The way that this is written, the bottom line here is, your existing zoning allows accessory buildings to encroach on your setbacks. This changes that so that only accessory buildings not used for human habitation can encroach on your setbacks. If somebody wants to build a shed, it can be within five feet of the lot line instead of fifteen. But if somebody wants to build an ADU, they'll have to conform to that fifteen-foot setback, just as if it was the primary residence. Now, there is one exception to that, and I might as well point out here, this bylaw, it also forbids detached ADUs in the front yard. You can put a detached ADU in the side yard, or you can put it in the backyard, but if you're going to put one in the front yard, it needs to be an addition to your house. It needs to be attached, so you're, they're seeing one house, not a house with a little thing in front of it. That, those two regulations, the encroach, no encroachment on the setbacks, and no detached ADUs in the front yard, there is one exception to that which we had to allow, in the case of an existing accessory building. For example, let's think of one of those nineteen twenties garages that's built right up to the sidewalk in the older neighborhoods, or somebody has a barn, an old barn, and it's twelve feet from the lot line instead of fifteen. Where there's an existing accessory building, where they, the state law requires them, requires communities to allow an ADU by right to be placed in that building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
A conversion.
What's that?
Essentially a conversion.
Yes, if, yeah, your conversion, converting a accessory building not used for human habitation to an ADU, that's the only case, when that building has, is already, has historically existed, that you can put an ADU in a building that is in the front yard or encroaches. Oh, okay. One other element in here, you currently have a ten-foot setback between an accessory building and the main building. If that, we're keeping that ten-foot setback if it's an accessory building not used for human habitation, and if it's a... Be closer than the incident, it's attached to more than one story. And if it's two stories, it has to be setback fifteen, okay? A detached accessory structure used for human habitation has to be setback fifteen rather than ten feet, in order to account for that second story of occupancy. Okay, C thirty-seven, five, and six here are the two that I was describing, about the pre-existing structures and front yards. Then we go on to parking requirements. The state law allows a requirement of a maximum of one parking space per ADU, and you have, you can not require that if the ADU is located within a half-mile of a transit station or bus station. When they then came out, when the state then came out with the regulations, they ruled that term "bus station." If the bus service along its, along its route has flag-down service instead of just set locations, then the entire route is considered the transit station, and the city cannot require an off-street parking space within half-mile of the bus lines. That's their interpretation. It occurs to me that bus lines move in a way that bus stations and train, and train stations do not, but that's the law. So, within one-half mile of either the MBTA station or one of the bus lines, the city cannot require an off-street parking space for an ADU. And within one-half mile of bus lines is most of the city, except the conservation land and a very, very, very large suburban area on the west side of town. On the other hand, very few people are going to want to add an ADU and not provide it with a parking space. We think that this is liable to be, you know, and when you're considering the topic that, the question of so many potential applicants, they can't fit theirs, so we're talking about the ones who are able to do that are going to have a sizable enough lot, and where are the sizable... And where are the sizable enough lots to put these? They're gonna want a parking space, especially when you consider who's, who's building these. They're liable to be homeowners and their own property. Adding one on, they're, they have their own innate interest in providing for themselves. So I think it's kind of unfortunate that the state interpreted it that way about bus lines, but I don't think it was really going to amount to much of difference in practice. There is some other language here exempting ADUs from some of the triggers or from, to site plan approval. Issues like, all right, two buildings on a lot always used to trigger site plan approval. When we're talking about, you know, a 50,000-square-foot industrial building and another 50,000-square-foot industrial building, that's one thing. When we're talking about something a little bigger than a shed going in someone's backyard, it's, it was judged to be something that didn't require as much oversight. And at the same time, didn't, didn't require the oversight of going in front of the planning board. We thought that going in front of the building commissioner, we being, being the working group, was the best way for these permits for a couple of reasons. One of which is that unlike a lot of zoning ordinances which are written for the developer or the developer's lawyer, it was important to write these ADU ordinances for the ordinary homeowner and for the process to be something that wouldn't be overly burdensome and expensive for the over, for the ordinary homeowner to do without needing to lawyer up, get an engineer, do, and go through a long and expensive permitting process. We thought that the issues that these, this type of development would raise would be, could be efficiently and effectively overseen at the level of the building commissioner.
At the time that a resident would apply for a building permit, Mr. Nile, do they present a plan? Here's my plot plan and here's where I'm putting it, so that you can confirm the dimensions before
Yes.
things start? Okay, so that's required as part of the building permit process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
These will all require a building permit, which will require the plans sufficient for a building permit. They're also gonna require septic, and if it's in an area that is not on the sewer, they're also gonna require that. So there is already built in to the process engineered plans necessary to protect the public good. Second set of plans for a zoning permit before a board. We don't need to require the applicants to get a set of plans drawn up for a zoning permit before the board in order to cover those engineering considerations that are being taken care of in a, in every building permit application.
But they would have to provide a septic plan.
Septic, yes, if they're not on, if they're not on sewer, they'd have to provide a septic plan too.
But even with a city sewer connection, they're still gonna have to have a plan.
Showing the connection, right?
Correct. So there's gonna be some kind of rudimentary plans for anything that comes before the building inspector.
Yeah, but they, those go right to the DPW.
Right.
They have to do a water and a sewer clearance.
Clearance plan.
So they get sent down there and they have to come back with a letter from DPW saying they can hook into the water.
So you'll, you'll be privy to the plan at that point, so.
And that's a requirement before you can issue the permit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, after the parking, all that's left, this, this is the accessory apartments section. Did you have, if there were any questions or comments about any of the language in there?
I, I'm confused as to why accessory apartments is used throughout the, the ordinance when accessory dwelling units, what the state law says, ADUs is.
Right, right.
It's confusing to me.
Right, they, we include in here, the definition that is, is being proposed as accessory apartment, and it includes in here language of, also known as an accessory dwelling unit. So we're basically defining those two things, accessory apartment, accessory dwelling units are two terms for the same thing. Different terms are used throughout. Your current language had, in your bylaw uses the term accessory apartments, so we just went with what was there for the purpose of simplicity and not, it, it's, it's just easier if both terms are used interchangeably based on the fact that there are already references that are in there to one. It makes, it's so, the two are just used as meaning the same term.
Yeah, I find that really confusing because if somebody has a question about it and they go to the state law because they wanna make sure, oh, I wanna make sure that I'm being treated consistently with the state law. State law uses accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and then they come into this and they say, well, maybe mine is an accessory apartment. So I, I think it would be helpful to be consistent with the state law because we're changing it to comply. So that would be my recommendation is to make it all the same thing so that there's no, you know, is an accessory apartment different from an ADU? That would be confusing, I think. So that's my one comment. Are you finished, Mr. Boyle?
Yes, I was, I was just taking your comments on, on the language.
Okay, good. I'll go to the council, Council Cormier.
Pauline, yep. Yeah, Mr. Boyle, can you just look at 90.1.6?
90.1.6. A permit issued for the accessory apartment accessory to a single-family residence dwelling does not authorize apartment, multifamily, or two-family dwelling use of the subject premises. Okay?
Explain, please.
So those three terms, apartment, multifamily, or two-family dwelling are defined terms in your bylaw, in, in your zoning ordinance. A single-family home with an accessory apartment on it is not a two-family. It is a single-family home with an accessory apartment. Somebody who has a single-family home and adds an accessory apartment onto it has not gained the right to place a two-family building on that lot. They have not gained the right to place a multifamily building on that lot. All they have gained, all they have is the right to have a principal dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit. That's why that language is in there.
Okay. Yeah, I think the way the sentence is written is, is very confusing
Yes.
because I had to note, what does this mean? So, you know, a building, it says a permit, but it would be a building permit, right?
Yes.
We could be more clear with there. A building permit issued for the
To an accessory apartment, accessory to a single-family dwelling residence. That's, that lowercase accessory, accessory to is like an adjective phrase. This accessory apartment which is accessory to a s- single-family residence does not authorize.
A building permit issued for the accessory dwelling unit, accessory to a single-family residence, I think that's still confusing, but I think if you do use the accessory dwelling unit.
Attached to, I could say attached to.
That would be better.
Although some of them are detached. That's why I didn't use attached to, because some of them are detached. Accessory to. I can think of a better, I can think of a better term if I have to.
Yes, Hillary?
A good one. Included with even. On a, on a lot with. Let's just be as specific as we can, on a lot with.
Good, so if you, yeah, that was definitely confusing, yeah.
And to your point, is I think also is, is if the language gets changed to an ADU, then that extra
It reads better.
It reads better, yes.
Yes.
Okay, no, that was it, thank you.
Council, but answer.
Mr. Boyle, just a couple of affirmations for public edification. What we're proposing to do here is entirely require, everything in, any, every permissive thing we're doing here is required by the state law.
Yes, yes.
And everything that we are regulating is within the state law.
Yes.
Okay. So we're sort of essentially making use of our authority to regulate within a narrow scope as provided by the statute.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. This is our attempt, after the state deregulated your accessory apartments, this is what we were able to do to re-regulate them.
Okay. And right now, we're just operating solely on the state law without any regulation at all?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Nope, no councils, okay. I'm
So just to Council Schalfo Zephyr's point, it sounds like that if you could sort of maybe amend that definitional section?
Yeah, in a couple of places.
Yeah, and then the language in the sentence that Council Cormier pointed out.
Yes, the Council Cormier pointed out that, yes, this
Council Pauline.
91.6, and go through and change all of the accessory apartments to ADUs.
ADUs, yeah.
So you, I mean, as your, your committee, I mean, you wanna
Well, the planning board won't, they, they have their public hearing on the 15th.
So we can't do anything.
We have to keep it open anyway, right?
So if you, if you could send that in to us as an amendment, that would be really helpful before, we can't vote until the planning board opines.
Right, and certainly I can make this, I can make this change, and that will be the version that gets presented to the planning board.
Perfect.
Perfect. And then, so we'll keep the public hearing open?
Yes.
And, good, and we'll have the new
Yep. And it's seven o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's open the meeting. Stay tuned, we'll be right back, wait you a minute. We gotta open the meeting.
We have to open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
We'll now take a roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Council David Cormier.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Council Arndinger.
Present.
Council Noesworthy.
Present.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Council Robbins.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. We have eight councils in attendance. Does the chairwoman of records have a report?
Actually, Mr. President, I'm gonna request more time on the minutes, please.
All right, that may be done. I'll entertain a motion for recess.
Right, motion.
Second, all in favor, please recognize your usual manner. We're in recess, and Council Schalfo, we're back to you.
Okay, good. So if there are no further questions from the council, oh, Council Robbins.
I'm just gonna ask one question that I just picked up on. Under section 22-92, 93.1, can you just explain why there's a reference to a specific September 12 of 2005 date in that line?
I suspect that that's from your existing ordinance, taken from your existing accessory apartment ordinance, that I, I pulled that directly from there. Both of those, as a matter of fact, are, I believe I just kept the, that section about existing as it is.
Okay.
Prior non-conforming use dates?
Uh, yeah, the, yes, this non-conforming use date is, yeah, was already in your
In the ordinance.
Okay.
Bylaw. And Yep. And the new one is for pre-existing accessory structures that encroach on the sidelines or that are in the front yard can only be converted to ADUs if they are existing on, I think I picked May 1st. Yeah, this is just a reflection of when I was writing the, of writing the law, so. Is there, I'm, I'm sorry, is there a request about what you'd like me to do with those dates?
I think I should just leave them.
Yeah, just leave them.
I'm not sure, it'll matter a whole lot, but I think you should leave them.
Yep.
Okay. All right, then no further questions from the council, I'll go to the audience. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment either for or in, I mean, in support of or in opposition to petition 3-26? For a second time, is there anybody who'd like to comment for or against petition 3-26? For a third and final time, is there anybody in the public who'd like to comment on 3-36? Pardon me. So my recommendation would be to keep the public hearing open, and we will review the changes that Mr. Boyle makes and submits. Yes, question?
Actually, I just have one more piece of information I, I wanted to share with you. I wanna make sure everybody understands that the interpretation of the law and the regulations that the Commonwealth issued do not limit accessory dwelling units to single-family homes.
Right.
A two-family home or a multifamily building may add an accessory dwelling, one accessory dwelling unit under the new law. So you could have, for a two-family house that had a yard, they could add a detached accessory dwelling unit or another addition and have that be their accessory dwelling unit. It would have to reach, it would have to meet all of the state requirements and limits and things, but they could add an accessory dwelling unit. It's even theoretically possible, a large multifamily, one of the mills that's been converted to, say, 86 units qualifies under this law to add one accessory dwelling unit. I have this crazy idea that one of these, one of these mills that's gone condo is gonna build a glass penthouse on the top as an accessory dwelling unit and rent it out and have a big income for, for the condo association. But yes, I wanna make sure you know that the way that this is written, accessory dwelling units are not exclusively for single-family homes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back in session, starting with, we still have to do the public forum, I'm sorry. And we'll get a list in just a second. Yeah, second line?
Mm-hmm. I like your, it looks very appropriate for Easter. Congratulations on a fun Easter time.
Thank you. Okay, we're now gonna conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We do not have anyone signed up this evening for the public forum, but nonetheless, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? And for a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I'll declare the public forum closed, and we'll go back to our regular meeting, starting with communications from the mayor and C12.
Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $40,000 be made to Ripple Effect Per Recovery, Peer Recovery and Support Center out of the mayor's capital expense line in the general fund, the same to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund.
C12 is referred to the chairman of finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C12 has been given regular course. C13?
Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $40,000 be made to the Catholic charities out of the mayor's capital expense line in the general fund, the same to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund. Regarding the amount requested is to provide the initial support with the opportunity to reassess future needs.
C13 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C13 has been given regular course. C14?
Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $1,221.05 be made to PermaLine Corp. of New England out of the mayor's capital expense line in the general fund, the same to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund. Regarding the signs have already been purchased and installed throughout the city. These signs fall directly within the guidelines of the opioid settlement regulation, which allow for funding of public awareness and prevention initiatives.
C14 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Regular course.
C14 has been given regular course. Moving on to C15?
Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $350,000 be made to the building capital fund, the same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. These funds are needed to support necessary repairs and upgrades to the parking garage.
C15 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Once again, regular course.
C15 has been given regular course. C16?
Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, request that you adopt the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, project funding agreement for the proposed new Fallbrook School building project. Please, please reference the letter submitted April 11, 2025, which outlines the project details and identifies the funding sources.
C16 is referred to the chairwoman of legal affairs.
Uh, thank you very much. Regular course with referrals to the comptroller and the superintendent, and we do need to establish a public hearing.
Okay, are you suggesting the next meeting, Councilor?
Uh-uh, no.
Then I guess the first meeting in October?
Sure.
Which would be 10/14. And let's see, I think we have some business already Then, I guess, the first meeting in October?
Sure.
Which would be ten fourteen, and, let's see, I think we have some business already that night?
We do.
Six-ten, six-thirty, how about, why don't we go with six forty? That's okay?
That's fine, thank you.
All right, and I think the only other member of your committee is Councilor...
Pauline.
Pauline, okay with that?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of giving C-16 regular course and establish a public hearing on October fourteenth at six forty P.M., please recognize your usual manner, all right, that may be done. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with sixteen dash twenty-six.
Mark C. Bonanza, four C, Counselor, requests to amend section thirteen dash seventy-seven, stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for eastbound traffic on Gevery Circle at the intersection of Gordon Street.
Sixteen dash twenty-six is referred to the Chairwoman of Legal Affairs.
Sixteen dash twenty-six should be given regular course with referrals to DPW and the Leominster Police Department Traffic Division, and we do need a public hearing on this as well.
What date are you suggesting?
What do we have on the fourteenth, I know we had one other thing.
We have, we got two other things, actually, we have, we have the, that big, long, those two, I think there's petition from the Captain.
Captain Frere?
Yeah, we have something, yeah, we have both, two petitions, round, two long ones, plus what we just set, which was the School Building Authority.
Okay, should we go to the second meeting in October then for this? It's up to, this, I mean, they should be relatively quick.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, I think we could probably squeeze it into the twenty-second, too, if you want, shouldn't be a long hearing.
I think the twenty-second has a lot going on, doesn't it?
Yeah, fair amount, do you wanna go to the twenty, you wanna go to the, I guess it would be the twenty, no, not the twenty-eighth, 'cause it's the holiday, right? So, what's the, what's the date?
Twenty-seven, it would be, I think.
Ten twenty-seven? All right, so, let's go ten twenty-seven at, we have nothing on now, right, so far? So, let's do ten twenty-seven at six fifty?
That sounds good, Dean.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so, the recommendation on sixteen, Council Cormier, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, yes, thank you.
Recommendation on sixteen dash twenty-six is regular course with referrals to the DPW, Leominster Police Department Traffic Division, and a public hearing on ten twenty-seven at six fifty P.M., all in favor, please indicate your usual manner, all right, that may be done. Moving on to Finance and C-ten.
The financial report first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we began the fiscal year on July first, twenty-twenty-five, the opioid stabilization fund had five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents, pending the three appropriations that are on here for the first time and the two others we already approved, we will have spent one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents, and that will leave us with a balance of four hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents. City Leominster's capitalization account began with a balance of, the capital stabilization began with a balance of four million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents. We have spent to date, two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, leaving us with a balance of two million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one dollar and sixty-two cents, and the stabilization fund began with a balance on July first of twenty-four million, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. We will have spent one million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and that will leave us a balance of twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, and that is the financial report.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Finance and C-ten, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-ten, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of forty-two thousand dollars be made to the transfer station expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. What this is for, we have two different letters from Michelle Powell, the Director of the Health Department, and I can read them very quickly. The Health Department is requesting appropriations of the following funds for FY twenty-six, these funds are being requested by the Health Department to conduct our own noise, odor, and traffic studies relating to the proposed expansion of the transfer station on Tansio Road. These studies are being done at the direction of the Board of Health Chairman, Dr. Peter Lanza. Per Jake Blake with K.P. Law, a portion of this cost can slash, will be reimbursed by win-waste, although the amount at this time is unknown. So, the total is forty-two thousand, with thirteen thousand, five hundred is a fee for traffic study to be conducted by Vanasse and Associates, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars is the fee for a sound study to be conducted by Verandis, Verandits, and eleven thousand is a fee for an odor study to be conducted by Verandits. And it goes on to explain, on another letter, separate letter, that United Material Management, UMM, is located at two hundred Tansio Road, Leominster, Mass., and has been in operation since May of two thousand and twenty. To meet the growing demands for waste handling in the Commonwealth, the existing UMM Leominster Transfer Station is pursuing a permit modification, which is minor, to increase the handling capacity at the existing facility from one thousand tons per day to fifteen hundred tons per day. The facility will not require building expansion to accommodate the increased capacity and will continue to handle all materials within the existing thirty-two thousand, five hundred square-foot building. Information about the project and upcoming meeting schedule can be found at www.ummlemonster.com, and attached is a copy of the proposed project. It says here that UMM has done their own odor study, odor, sorry, their own odor and sound study by Tech Environmental and a traffic study by Bowman. The Leominster Health Department would like to initiate their own studies to be peer-reviewed before ultimately coming to the Board for final approval. So, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, I know this has been going on for a while, there's been some public meetings, hearings about this, I think they were all at the Franco's, and I think, you know, given what I'm reading, you know, we owe it to the, to the neighbors, the people that are on that end of town to have it peer-reviewed and just make sure that everything checks out as requested by the Health Department, so it'd be my request, it'd be my recommendation that we grant C-ten, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yeah, and I have to say, and I was at the meeting at the Franco's, the neighbors are concerned, I think this is a good way to settle some of those concerns, address some of those concerns as well, but as to the, the owners over there, they have been very receptive, they've been very good, I think this is a way to, to keep an eye on it, and I think that the neighbors will feel much better if we get this independent evaluation, so, I'm in support.
Okay, so, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-ten, is there any further discussion? Council Frida?
Just a comment, those of us that were at the meeting, you know, it's clear that they need noise and, and odor control, and I think it's gone a little, gone okay since that meeting, they've been, a couple of the neighbors that had concerns have gone through the building with the Health Department, and it seems like they clarified some of the issues, but I still think they need to have this, this done and have it in their records so that they know what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-ten, please recognize your usual manner, all right, by a vote of eight to zero, C-ten has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of forty-two thousand dollars be made to the transfer station expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea?
Yea.
Any nays? By a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to Ways and Means, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is eight dash twenty-six, Elizabeth Doran, City Clerk, requested the City Council grant the attached election order for September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election. This was given regular course on our last meeting, it would be my position to grant the election order, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Arndinger?
I agree.
Council David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant eight dash twenty-six, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting eight twenty-six, please recognize your usual manner, all right, eight twenty-six has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to Legal Affairs at three dash twenty-six, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, three dash twenty-six, Glenny, Executive Director, Marches at Regional Planning Commission, request to amend the zoning ordinance to replace Article fifteen, accessory apartments with a new Article fifteen, that complies with recently passed state law and make other changes to implement the new ordinance. We had a public hearing earlier this evening that we continue to our next meeting, the planning board has their public hearing on this on September fifteenth, and we did ask Mr. Boyle to make some changes to the language, that we will get back in time for the public hearing, so my recommendation would be for further time.
All right, and Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
So, here the recommendation, and continued public hearing to nine twenty-two, I think it was at, let's see, why don't we do six forty? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, a vote of eight to zero, three dash twenty-six has been given further time with a continued public hearing date to September twenty-second at six forty P.M. Moving on to five dash twenty-six, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Five dash twenty-six, Joe Pandolfo, on behalf of Golden Nozzle Car Wash and Noria Energy, four sixty-eight Main Street in Leominster, can we wave the rest of the reading?
Yes.
Okay, so, we had a public hearing on this earlier today, and we have a positive recommendation from the Fire Chief, and it says, City Council, dated August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, City Council of Leominster Fire Department gives a favorable recommendation to grant petition five dash twenty-six, Robert Sidlow, the second Fire Chief, Leominster Police Fire Department. So, my recommendation after the public hearing and understanding why these underground tanks are needed, my recommendation would be to grant five dash twenty-six.
Very well, Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant five dash twenty-six, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting five twenty-six, please recognize your usual manner, five twenty-six has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to ten dash twenty-six.
Ten dash twenty-six, Ward, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, request to amend chapter thirteen, Motor Vehicles in Traffic, section thirteen dash twenty-five, entitled Speed Limits, specific streets and add the following, Old Mill Road from Willard Street to Jungle Road at twenty-five miles per hour. We did have a public hearing earlier this evening, Captain Frere, who supervises the Leominster Police Department Traffic Division, supports this, and we have not had a referral back from the DPW. I don't know how I feel about holding it up for the DPW, I think maybe we should just proceed, the Police Department supports it, so my recommendation would be to grant ten dash twenty-six.
I see Council Cormier nodding.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant ten dash twenty-six, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, the vote is eight to zero in favor. Moving on to C-eleven, if you wanna just suggest that this is a homewill petition that is scheduled, I guess, for a public hearing on nine twenty-two to exempt some of the upper management of the Police Department, that's adequate?
Okay, C-eleven, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the City Council submit a request pursuant to Article two, Section eight, Paragraph one clause of the amendments of the Constitution is amended by Article, I don't know what that is, eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine, or eighty-nine, that Senator, State Senator John Cronin, State Representative Natalie Higgins filed special legislation with the General Court on behalf of the city to exempt the positions of Police Lieutenant, Police Sergeant from the civil service. This is, the Council President said, we will have a public hearing on this on September twenty-second at six twenty-five P.M., so my recommendation at this point is for further time.
Very well, Council Cormier?
I agree.
All right, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give C-eleven further time, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please recognize your usual manner, further time by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to nine dash twenty-six.
Nine dash twenty-six, Susan Shalfo Zephyr, Brandon Robbins, Counselors at Large, Ward One Counselor, Robert M. Tossi, and ten registered voters, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to MU two zoning. This has a scheduled public hearing for September twenty-second at six thirty P.M., so my recommendation would be for further time.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant nine dash twenty-six further time, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, nine dash twenty-six has been given further time, and the hearing date is already established for September twenty-second at six thirty P.M. Moving on to twelve dash twenty-six.
Twelve dash twenty-six, John Frere, Captain, one sixteen Central Street, Leominster Police Department, request to amend section thirteen dash eighty-eight dot three, right turn restriction by adding the following, no driver of a vehicle traveling northbound on Central Street at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Park Street shall make a right-hand turn onto Monument Square. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, Captain Frere was here to answer any questions, this is, I think, mainly housekeeping, so my recommendation would be to grant.
Council Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twelve dash twenty-six, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, twelve twenty-six is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to thirteen dash twenty-six.
Thirteen dash twenty-six, John Frere, Captain, one sixteen Central Street, Leominster Police Department, request to amend section thirteen dash eighty-eight dot two, right lane must turn right by adding the following, Monument Square northbound onto Mechanic Street. We had a public hearing earlier this evening with Captain Frere present, explaining what this was all about, and my recommendation would be to grant thirteen dash twenty-six.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant thirteen dash twenty-six, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, thirteen dash twenty-six has been granted. Fourteen dash twenty-six, where we're changing a whole bunch of parking meters to parking signs.
That's right, so, this fourteen dash twenty-six, as the Council President just said, is submitted by John Frere, Captain, one sixteen Central Street, Leominster Police Department, requesting repealing section thirteen dash sixty-two parking meter zones, two hours, and replacing them with signs along Central Street, Church Street, Main Street, and Mechanic Street, and Merrim Avenue, Park Street, Pearl Street, Pleasant Street, West Street, so, there's a long list here, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for this on October fourteenth at six thirty P.M., so my recommendation would be for further time.
Very well, Council Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give fourteen dash twenty-six further time, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those, please recognize your usual manner, favor? All right, I mean, just advanced two-plus pages of the agenda, one single quick moment. Moving on to fifteen dash twenty-six.
Fifteen twenty-six, Elizabeth Wood, Director of Planning and Development, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to battery energy storage systems. We have a public hearing scheduled on this petition on October fourteenth at six-ten P.M., so my recommendation is for further time.
Council Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation for further time, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please recognize your usual manner, fifteen dash twenty-six has been given regular time with an established public hearing of October fourteenth at six-ten P.M. Moving on to Public Safety and Traffic Committee.
Petition, six dash twenty-six, David R. Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, request to place a streetlight on the telephone pole located in front of six ninety-nine Willard Street. We had a public hearing earlier this evening that we proposed, and my recommendation at this point would be to grant, six dash twenty-six.
Council Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Safety...
Public Safety, yeah.
Public Safety Committee.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Council Knowsworthy and Frida.
And Council, Council Frida, sorry, you're doing yeoman, yeo women work this evening, Council Shalfo Zephyr. Council Knowsworthy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Council Frida? You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Safety Committee to grant six dash twenty-six, please, any further discussion? Seeing none, please, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner, all right, that's been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to seven dash twenty-six.
Seven dash twenty-six, Carrie Knowsworthy, Ward Five Counselor, request the installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of Abbott Avenue and Lindell Avenue to address ongoing safety concerns. We have a public hearing, we've continued the public hearing to September twenty-second at six twenty P.M., so my recommendation is further time.
Council Knows... Counselor Nosworthy?
I agree.
Okay, Counselor Frida?
Agreed.
Okay, you heard the unanimous recommendation for further time. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please indicate your usual manner. 7-26 is being furthered time. Moving on to New Business and First Reading of an Ordinance.
Okay. First Reading of an Ordinance, petition 4-26, Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, Monarchus at Regional Planning Commission, request to amend the zoning ordinance to add the MFOD to the abbreviations table for overlay districts in Article 3. We do have the ordinance, and it reads as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances entitled Administration. Chapter 2, Article 28 of the revised ordinances entitled School Committee is hereby amended by deleting Section 2-111, compensation in its entirety. Oh, I haven't flipped. I'm sorry. You know what, I do. I was reading, I'm sorry, I was reading the second, the second ordinance. That's my mistake. Thank you. Counselor Robbins for getting me back on track there. So anyways, this is 4-26. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended at Article 3 Table of Uses by inserting the following text to the overlay district abbreviation table, abbreviation MFOD, overlay district multifamily, Section 22-33A, page 64. My recommendation would be to adopt the first reading.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation to adopt the first reading. Is there any discussion? This would be by roll call, starting with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yea.
Counselor Nosworthy.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Robbins.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
I'll be recorded as yea. First reading is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to Old Business and Second Reading of an Ordinance.
Second Reading of an Ordinance, C-94, Dean J. Mazarella Mayor, request an increase of $2,000 for Leominster School Committee members, along with a cost of living increase based on the Consumer Price Index. This increase would begin at the start of next term. And we have the ordinance here, and it reads as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances entitled Administration. Chapter 2, Article 28 of the revised ordinances entitled School Committee is hereby amended by deleting Section 2-111, compensation in its entirety, and inserting in its place the following text. The salary of each member of the school committee shall be $4,000 per year effective January 1, 2026. Effective January 1, 2027, and on an annual basis thereafter, a percentage increase of the school committee salary will be established consistent with the annual Consumer Price Index of the previous calendar year with a minimum of no increase and a maximum increase of 5%. My recommendation would be that we adopt the second reading.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the second reading, or confirm the second reading of C-94. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yea.
Counselor Nosworthy.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Robbins.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. The second reading is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Any additional old and new business? Counselor Frida?
Just an update on the middle sex situation.
Sure.
An order was presented to the court today for civil contempt. I'm not going to read the whole order, but I think it's important to read just the part of the exhibit. This is a true and accurate copy of the order that's attached, Exhibit E. As of the date of the verification of this complaint for civil contempt, MEM has failed to comply with the court order. In particular, MEM has failed to remove all equipment and materials from the property associated with the marijuana operation. The city's code enforcement officer performed an inspection of the property on or about August 29th, 2025, and September 3rd, 2025, and took photographs showing MEM's equipment and materials remaining inside the property. A true and accurate copy of the photographs taken by the code enforcement officer are attached. While MEM is no longer actively growing marijuana at the property, the ongoing use of the property for storage of equipment and materials relative to MEM's overall business operations violates the court order and the city's zoning ordinance. The city is also particularly concerned that no qualified professionals have been hired to perform the complex removal of MEM's equipment. The unattended equipment and materials presents a life safety concern and fire hazard in their current condition. It is well established that civil contempt is found where there is clear and undoubted disobedience of a clear and unequivocal command, Allen versus School Committee of Boston. Therefore, the defendant's refusal and/or failure to cease and desist all use and operations at the property by removing all equipment and materials from the property as required by the court order clearly and unequivocally violates the terms of the court order and is therefore punishable by contempt. Wherefore, the town respectfully requests the Honorable Court to issue a summons pursuant to mass rule, Civil P Rule, ordering the defendant Middle Sex Integrative Medicine to appear before the court for the purpose of a hearing on the merits and considering such other matters the court may deem appropriate, after a hearing to find the defendant Middle Sex Integrative Medicine in civil contempt for failing and/or refusing to comply with the terms of the clear and unequivocal court order. Order that the defendant Middle Sex Integrative Medicine immediately take steps to purge itself of contempt by complying with the clear and unequivocal requirements of the court order, and assess against the defendant Middle Sex Integrative Medicine a per-day penalty of $500 payable to the City of La Mesa for every day of continued noncompliance with the court order, and/or appoint a receiver to bring the property into compliance with the order. Order that the defendant Middle Sex Integrative Medicine pay all costs and legal fees incurred by the city, and award to the city such other relief as the court deems just and equitable. This was presented by a city solicitor to the courts today. So hopefully we'll get some action soon on this.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Any items for the community calendar? We do have the Johnny Appleseed Fair between now and our next meeting on the 20th of September, Saturday. I think it starts at 9:00 AM. Anybody else?
Food Truck Festival Friday night.
It's this Friday night, right?
5:00 PM, September 12th, yep.
Anything else? Counselor Nosworthy?
Thank you. The Hispanic Heritage Month will be celebrated on September 18th. I think it's 5:00 to 9:00 downtown.
Okay. Great. Anybody else? Counselor Frida?
I will announce, I guess there was some questions regarding the Cleopath Ruben Cutting on September 25th. Everybody should have gotten an invitation. I believe they mailed them all out. I double-checked today because I had a question that some counselors were saying they didn't get it. So I did check, and they said they sent everything out. It is, they would like to have an answer. I mean, you can send it to me, or you can send it to Cleopath, but it is an invitation-only event, and there'll be a luncheon following. The Lieutenant Governor will be there. So if there's, if anybody wants to just let the clerk know, she can tell me, or contact me, or contact Cleopath, whoever wants to do it.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, actually, one quick thing, if I may.
That's okay.
I just wanted to share that I had started up quarterly in-person meetings for Ward Five just for community building, so the next one will be on September 13th at the library on the third floor. So if any Ward Five individuals want to come up for community building, please do so. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Second, Counselor Robbins, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.